Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for joining us for the May 19th, 2022 regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. This meeting is now called to order. I ask you please stand now for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. We do have some special VIP guests with us here on this evening, and I'll ask Dr. Bracy now if he will now introduce them.
Thank you, Dr. Patillo. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And tonight, as Dr. Patillo mentioned, we have some special guests tonight from Parkview Elementary School. So at this time, I would ask Dr. Flowers if she will come to the front, and while she's coming, I will introduce the students. And as I call your name, students, you can come forward as well. So during the pledge tonight, we have Brandon Stebbins. Brandon, if you will come forward. Brandon is a sixth grade student who recently transferred to Parkview Elementary School from the state of Florida, where he was an honor roll student. Brandon enjoys anime and is a part of the anime club. He enjoys volunteering in his community and aspires to be a photographer. He's the son of Emmy and Daniel Stebbins. So here's a trivia question. Who knows what anime is? Brandon, I had to do a little research so that I knew exactly what I was saying tonight. So I'm very intrigued about the anime, but we can talk about that at a later time. Now, providing the school statement, we have Donovan Johnson. Donovan? Now let me make sure, did I say that correctly? Okay, I just want to make sure. Donovan is a fourth grade A honor roll student at Parkview Elementary School. Also is a member of the Sing For Joy Virtual All-City Choir this school year. Is also a member of the Kingdom Kids Children Ministry, in which he served for six years. Is also a member of the Second Cavalry Baptist Church Youth Choir. Donovan enjoys public speaking and exploring local historic sites. He also has an interest in a career in the arts and is a talented singer and artist. He's the son of two proud parents, Henry L. Johnson III and Megan White. And if all of our parents are present tonight, will you please stand and be recognized at this time? So, parents, while they give the pledge and the student's statement, feel free to come to the front if you want to get a good picture. Yeah, we don't mind. All right, so at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Brandon.
Good evening. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic for what stands one nation under God in the visible thirteen justices for all.
Brandon, you stay up here until we're done. We know you're not shy. Donovan, we're ready for the statement.
Greetings, School Board Chair Patillo, Madam Vice Chair Ms. Atkinson, board members, Superintendent Dr. Bracy, guests and friends. My name is Donovan Johnson, and I'm a fourth grader at Parkview Elementary School. At Parkview, the home of the Tigers, we are rooted in resilience to prosper and flourish. This was our welcome back statement in the fall and is still in view for all to see when entering our wonderful school. We made some adjustments throughout the year, but our school community is doing well, and we continue to operate in excellence under the direction of Dr. Flowers, Principal, and Dr. Wininman, Assistant Principal. This year has been exciting, as we have introduced new programs and expanded others in our school. We expanded our 21st Century After-School Program, and since receiving the grant, students are now meeting in person for the first time. We also have a growing Chrome Club under the guidance of our sponsor, Ms. Freiter. In addition, our library was overhauled by Ms. Walker, our media specialist. We have new books that connect us with a variety of cultures, innovations, and world exploration. Besides new books in the library, we have a Makerspace Center, which allows us to explore our creative talents. To add, our PBIS team is amazing, as they celebrate students and staff for working hard and making good choices. They remind us that we are special and to be good role models. To supplement this, two of our upper grade teachers, Ms. Y and Ms. Holmes, have initiated a new mentoring program with the mission of self-empowerment, self-care, and self-awareness. They are currently accepting applications for summer school students. One thing I love about Parkview is the spectacular learning curriculum. In math, we strengthened our math reasoning skills. In history, we studied about the past and present events that have shaped Virginia and America. In science, I really love investigating the weather, the tools we need to measure and examine weather, and the different types of natural occurrences, such as hurricanes, and how we can protect ourselves when they approach our area. In my preparation for this event, I asked a few students some questions. First, I asked, what do you like about being a student at Parkview? A kindergartner said, listening in class, classroom games and activities, and spreading love with her friends. I also spoke to a first grader, and they said using their computers and having fun in PE. Lastly, I spoke to a second grader, and they said they liked using their computer and reading centers. When I asked what makes our school staff amazing, a third grade student said her teacher is nice and helpful. A fifth grader said that his teachers help him learn and improve his education. And then I was curious and wanted to ask a final question. What would you do to make our school better? A fourth grader said that they wanted school time to be shorter. A sixth grader said that we would have certain periods of time in class when we're allowed to use our phones. I do not believe that our principals would like that very much, so we will stay with the current learning and enrichment programs created for us. In closing, I would like to say to the entire school board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in behalf of my school and for putting students and staff first.
You both did an amazing job, and while you're there, Dr. Cotton, he's gonna come down and make a small presentation to you. I just want to say, I'm so happy that Florida let you go. You made our school division so much better. And Donovan, you're a genius in the making, and I'm gonna make sure I continue to follow you throughout your educational career.
Well, first of all, for you, Brandon, I want to say, I caught that. One day, I'm gonna vote for you for school board. I said that you like quick meetings, okay? But no, I still don't know what anime is. No one ever told me, so I guess I'll research it too. And to you, you read so eloquently. I already text your pastor and told him how eloquent you are. But this is just a token of appreciation and love for what you've done tonight, and as well as the stellar work that you continue to do. Just know, if you need us, we're here. So I just wanted to give you all this.
Thank you.
And Dr. Flowers, before you say something, I'm gonna have Dr. Bracy to go ahead and educate us on what anime is, because I want to know too.
Unless, I mean, Brandon, unless you want to do it, do you want to share what anime is?
Go ahead, Brandon.
I'd rather hear from...
Japanese cartoon.
I'm quite shy, if you know, so I probably won't say anything.
Well, tell me if I get it right, okay? All right, so I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget. So anime is a style of Japanese film that has very colorful graphics with it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is it anything I need to add to it, to the explanation? That's it? Okay. Yeah, well, thank you. That was a teachable moment for me to do the research on that. Dr. Flowers? Would you like to?
On behalf of Parkview Elementary School, I want to thank you for thinking of us during this time of year to present. I think it was a great opportunity to get our students out, because we haven't been out in quite a few years here at Parkview. This is actually, I think, our first outing in about four years, so thank you, and we hope that we will continue to bring great things to Parkview and that you all will come and visit us. Our doors are always open. So again, thank you for the support this year, and I look forward to being with you all next year.
Thank you. Hold on one second. I know Ms. Atkinson has a hint, but I also want to recognize your staff. Dr. Wininman, who was here, Ms. Assistant Principal, Ms. Perry Wallace, the Guidance Counselor, and Mr. Blake, who keeps the school safe over there. Thank you all for coming as well.
Thank you. I just want to say, Dr. Flowers, you have some amazing students. Brandon, keep going with the anime. It's many careers in anime a lot of people don't know about, the graphics, the arts, the filmmaking, the social media. So if that's something that you truly want to do, there's definitely several careers in that. Donovan, you are amazing. Your diction, reading level, you have to be on like a 12th grade reading level. And it's amazing, like you're in the fourth grade. Can I hire you to speak for me? Because just let me know. I mean, contact me. I'll hire you as my speaker. But no, great job.
Thank you all so much for coming. Agenda item 3.5 is our school board mission statement. Dr. Cotton?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item 3.6 is attendance roll call. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Atkinson? Dr. Cotton? Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mrs. Schumake?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillington?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Dr. Patillo?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.7 is consideration of the agenda for May 19th, 2022. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Mr. Tillington, second by Ms. Atkinson. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Atkinson? Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillington?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you. Agenda items 4.1 and 4.2 is public comment for non-agenda and agenda items. I don't believe we have any speakers, correct?
No, sir.
Thank you so much. Agenda items 5.5, 0.1 through 5.3 is consent agenda items. They're in your board docs. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Williams, second by Vice Chair Atkinson. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillington?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Agenda item 6.1 is our monthly report for curriculum and instruction. Dr. Win?
Good evening, Dr. Patillo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. It is that exciting time of the meeting again, and tonight we have the written board report for you, along with a list of the performing arts activities this month. And we also have a special presentation tonight from the World Languages, Gifted and ESL Department, and Dr. Prosperanta Calhoun is here to do that.
Good evening. Chairman, Dr. Patillo. I had to practice that a little bit, in which order to have it, Dr. Patillo. Ms. Atkinson, the Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bracy, it is my distinct pleasure to be here this evening to share with you some highlights from three separate departments. I am here to represent the students and staff from Gifted and Talented, World Languages, and ESL, not in exactly that order. You will be seeing shortly a presentation that we prepared for you, but I wanted to also just give you a little bit of a highlight before you hear it. We said in the presentation that we have 10 students graduating from the ESL program. We actually have 11 students that are current and former ESL students graduating. These students are from nine different countries plus Puerto Rico, and I will share with you, we have one from the Dominican Republic, Guatemala, Uruguay, China, Yemen, the Philippines, Jamaica, Honduras, Mexico, and two of them are from Puerto Rico. We have just about a little bit over 150 students, but we do have a diverse group of students that we are serving extremely well here in Portsmouth Public Schools, and without further delay, I will let you have a chance to hear a little bit more about that. In our World Languages Department, where we currently offer Spanish, French, and Latin, we are exploring bringing in additional languages and expanding our programs into the elementary.
I'm El Mano. Mi hermana se llama Naiolía. Mi hermana tiene quince años. Su cumpleaños.
Currently this year, we work on getting a Chinese language teacher, and we are a semifinal school for the critical language program. We also had a number of students participate in the National Latin Exam. For our ESL program, one of the most proudest moments for us will be graduation this year. We have 10 graduating seniors coming out of the ESL program. When you think about, our program has about 150 students from K-12. To have 10 students graduating is astronomical. We are very proud of that. It highlights the hard work that every staff member that have touched the life of these students have done, that include the counselors, teachers, parents, administrators, and more importantly, the students. We want to thank everybody for making this happen.
I was clever at school slash home, because I can read books slash read on my phone.
I like Ms. Celeste.
Why do you like Ms. Celeste, Dylan?
Because she gets me food and treats.
I am smart.
Our students in Gifted have been working diligently with project-based learning. We continue to nurture the critical thinking skills and the problem-solving skills of our students, which will help them way beyond the years in Portsmouth Public Schools. We want them to be the lifelong learners that we all strive to be. And on this point, I must say as well that we are very proud of everything that is ongoing in Gifted. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share that with you. I'm so proud of all the work that our students, teachers, and their parents as well. We continue to give them credit for that, doing to continue to achieve and achieve at a high level. I've worked in a district previously where just one high school may have had 200 first level ESL students, and we never saw that many students graduate in one year, just to give you an idea of the magnitude of this accomplishment. I don't think we should take it lightly. I think that's something PPS should be extremely proud of, and on behalf of the staff, thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions or comments from board members at this time? Ms. Thomas?
Hi, it's not a question. I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Calhoun, for the presentation, and I was happy to hear you say, and Dr. Win knows this, that, you know, we're exploring implementing world languages in our elementary school, and that's very near and important to me, because the earlier we start, as you know, Dr. Calhoun, with world language and second language, is the easier it is for our children to learn. And I think our ESL students are really a great example of, you know, kind of reverse engineering that for our English as a first language students to learn a second language and implementing the same practices. So I look forward to as very soon in the next school year, looking, developing a plan to have full language immersion in our elementary school. So thank you for that presentation.
Thank you so much. And also, board members and your board docs, they so graciously included their 2022 Performing Arts Spring presentation schedule, so there are also virtual events that you also can attend from behind your computer screen to see the performance of our students, as well as some in-person performances as well. So thank you all for that calendar. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't want to interrupt.
You're good.
And I'm sorry I had to step out. Nature called. What I wanted to ask was, speaking of ESL, do our high school students who are ESL students get a dual-language certificate or stamp on their diploma, seeing that they are a second language, as they already have mastery of the first language? Yes, and some of our students do get the...
Dr. Calhoun, will you come to the mic so the audience can hear you?
Some of our students do get that validity seal. There are some additional requirements that they have to meet in order to receive it, but this is, we have had more and more students receive that seal in the last couple of years. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. If there are no further questions, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7.1, our monthly report from Superintendent Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Dr. Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board. Tonight, I will give my time to give some updates to our staff and families and some important reminders of events that we have coming up. The first will be that of two new COVID-19 vaccine clinics that we're hosting in partnership with the Portsmouth Health Department. If you missed today's clinic at Parkview, then please make sure you mark your calendar for Saturday, June 4th. That will be the next clinic from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Simonsdale Elementary School. You can learn more about this event, as well as any other vaccination sites, on the upcoming Vaccination Clinic's webpage on PPSK12.us. In addition, our Office of Title I is helping to support families over the break. They're hosting a 2022 Title I Summer Resource Fest. At the event, there will be information and resources to families to help them navigate those summer months with their children. This will include book giveaways, community partner information, and even a bicycle ride sponsored by the Mercy Dream Drop Center. The event will take place Wednesday, June 1st, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. at the Emily Spong Center. It is May, which of course means we're in the midst of SOL testing. I want to thank our teachers and our staff for the wonderful work they're doing to inspire students to get to this point. And to our students, I want them to know that we're proud of them for what they've accomplished to get us to this point, and I know they will make us proud at the end of the year. I also want to thank the Research and Testing Office, Mr. Nottingham, with the folks in your office, and I'm sure you would give them more of the credit than yourself, because I know that all of you are working hard. But we want to thank you all for what you're doing and getting the resources and information out to the schools as well. And you and I talked before this, and I know that this can be very challenging, so please make sure you thank your staff on our behalf. I know I mentioned this last month, but it does bear repeating. You know, we're already planning for the next school year, so we want to just reiterate to the families about the five-year-olds registering for kindergarten. You know, if you're five years old before September 30th, we want to make sure that you get your child enrolled, and that can be done on our webpage. Also, with our Bright Start Preschool Program, children who will be four years old or before September 30th, those applications are also being accepted, and the deadline is Tuesday, May 31st. Finally, as a calendar reminder, which I'm sure I don't have to remind our staff, this is the last asynchronous learning staff telework day, which is next Friday, May 27. And I know that I myself, and I know the staff and teachers have thoroughly enjoyed these days, and I'm grateful for the flexibility that was granted to us for this school year. All schools and administrative staff offices, of course, will be closed on Monday, May 30th, for Memorial Day. So that completes my report.
Thank you so much, sir. Any questions for Dr. Bracy on his report? All right, Agenda Item 7.2 is a roll call vote for consideration to approve certain VSBA policies. The policies were listed in board docs for the last few weeks, and if you have any questions on that, you can ask at this time. Ms. Hines?
I do, thank you, Chair. And I neglected to write down which ones I'm specifically speaking of, but the ones I'm speaking of have to do with, it's GBM, Professional Staff Grievances, and GBMA, Support Staff Grievances. My question is, is once this is approved, how does that change the grievance process, and how will that be implemented and pushed down to those that need to file a grievance?
I will get the information. I don't know if Ms. Duran or Dr. Cromartie are ready to share that information at this time.
Okay.
Do you?
Dr. Bracy, I would ask that we be given time to come back on that.
Right.
I will say that we promoted the policies as they were presented to us by the Virginia School Boards Association.
Okay. So if you want greater detail, you know, we can bring that back, and we can have that discussion at the work session.
Well, and I think, and I just think it's for us to know, so that when we do get staff questions, we know what the process is, and then also, how is that going to be shared with staff, so that they are aware of changes, any major changes that go along with the change in this policy? Thank you.
If it's okay with the board, and I'm going to consult with Mr. Carroll to make sure if we can put this agenda item off to our next public meeting, to give us time to get response back from the staff, and then we can vote on it at that time?
Yes, you can pass it.
Okay. So if it's okay with the board, I can go in and pass this along, so we can be certain what we're voting on, and answer Ms. Hines' questions first. All right, thank you so much.
Chairman, Patillo?
Ms. Williams?
These are policies that were presented to us from VSBA, right?
Yes.
So if there are any changes to them contrary to VSBA, then we stand on our own, and they don't back us. Is that the same rule?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Agenda Item 7.3 is consideration of final school board operating budget for fiscal year 2223. I ask Mr. Falk to come up if we have any questions. But on tonight, for those who are listening at home, we'll be voting on a budget that was presented to us by the Superintendent based on school division needs. That included a 5% raise for staff. We realize at this moment that we're meeting, the state has yet to pass an official budget for the fiscal year, but we're required by state code to pass and approve a budget in this timeframe. So we will be voting to approve a budget to include a 5% raise for all staff. If something changes with the state budget, then we will be forced to come back and probably hold a special meeting during the summer session to make any changes that would be necessary at that time. But I would ask now if board members have any questions for Mr. Falk? But I would ask now if board members have any questions for Mr. Falk before we entertain a motion. Ms. Williams.
Mr. Falk, thank you. And what was the difference in the amount that we recommend, that the state is recommending versus what we got last year?
Yes, ma'am. Hold on one second. I will tell you that.
For state specifically, it is about $13.9 million in difference from the numbers from last year.
Okay, so they're keeping with the budget that was presented by, before Governor Northern left?
Well, right now, we're basing this budget on Governor Northam's recommended budget. Obviously, once the General Assembly comes back with an approved budget, and there's differences between those two, we would have to reconcile those. But this budget is based on Governor Northam's budget that he presented back in December.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And also for the city, and I know I can look at the numbers myself, but it's easier for you to look at them and tell. The city, what was the difference?
We asked them for flat funding this year.
Level funding?
So $59.9 million is what we asked the city for. And they have approved that in their budget that they passed last week.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions for Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Mr. Falk, I want to say thank you to you and your staff for, because this, the moving target, as we have always called it, and we spoke in the previous session, it's been a long time since we've had one of these big moving targets. Do we have a budget book yet?
We're working through that right now. Because of all the changes, some of the budget changes could have a big effect on where things are budgeted and where we need to move things. So we're trying to work through that to make sure that we have the final items in the appropriate places. For example, depending on where revenues come from, from the state, may cause us to move and shift things in our expenditure budget and even in our revenue budget. So yes, we're working on that, trying to go in line with the state when they finalize their budget.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. If there are no more questions, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Thomas. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Dr. Cotten.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mrs. Schumake.
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Tilling.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Patillo.
Yes.
Eight yes, one no, it passes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Falk. Agenda item 7.4 is board member comments. Do we have any at this time? Ms. Schumake, Ms. Thomas, and then Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you, Chairman. Mine is really quick. I just wanted to let everybody know about Newport News Shipbuilding. They have a offer for graduating seniors. They're offering $1,000, and this is, this kind of goes into our CTE program. More information and a collaboration with Newport News is forthcoming. But I want those of you who are out there, who are listening, to be aware of this because the deadline is June 1st. So they are offering $1,000 in a sign-in bonus and $1,500 for relocation to trade new hires. So this is for all graduating high school seniors. So if you're out there and you're interested, please go to buildyourcareer.com if you're interested. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas.
Yes, two things. One, we did receive an email, some communication about examining how many tickets we get for graduation. I was wondering, can we, Dr. Cromartie, can you look into that? Or can we look into that as a whole, examine that?
Yes, ma'am. I actually have the answer to that one right now. We ordered 4,500 tickets per school. So in a meeting with graduation coordinators and principals a couple of weeks ago, I made the statement that each school will have the same number of tickets. They interpreted that to be the same number average per student. That's not what I meant. We ordered 4,500 as we have in years past, and that number will vary from school to school based on their graduation size. But the smallest, the largest would be 12 tickets per, and that would be Churchland High.
Okay, thank you. And I also want to say kudos to our student rep for doing exactly what the student rep does and bringing the students' concerns to the board, so kudos to you. And then, second is just a community garden program that's not with Portsmouth Public Schools, but through Parks and Rec that is starting at Cavalier Manor Rec Center. So they are looking for children from grades K through 12 to be a part of this program. They will meet, I believe the program is going to meet two days a week, one on the weekend and one on a weekday, to show students or children how to grow their own fruits and vegetables. They're going to do a lot of STEM-related activities where students can kind of measure or hypothesize the growth of certain flowers and certain vegetables. So if you have any, you know, if your children have any interest, I encourage you all to go to the Parks and Rec After School Youth Program link on the city's website to sign up and come out Saturday. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair. I attended a jamboree that was hosted by the Portsmouth Sports Club. I just want to highlight some of the honorees. We had Mr. Thomas, who's our procurement manager. He actually won Community Sports Person of the Year, and he's actually been over the Portsmouth Bruins for over 30 years. Also, our students that were awarded was our student representative, Janari Davis. And I didn't know your middle name was Kanye. Also, Louis Morales IV and Zion Hill as well. Those were the three honorees from Portsmouth Public Schools. So congratulations, everyone. Lauren, I was going to say, this is great. If we can get that out and send that out school-wide, that would be awesome. So everyone would know, you know, about these honors and awards that was given. Also, kudos to Eugene Swinson. They're doing a great job at Waters Middle with the students, with the brunch program that they have. So again, kudos to Eugene Swinson and the Big Homies Program. Board Member Thomas, you covered the gardening program. Let me see, what else? Also, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and School Board Member Schumake and Chair Patillo was big on the initiative, were here to help. I just want to remind the families that that option is still available, so look into that as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or concerns? I would just like to say thank you again to the staff for your hard work and diligence. I know we are in SOL testing time now, so I know there's a lot of stressing going on in a lot of schools right now. So just hold it together, be cool, everything's going to be okay. You know, everything's going to be okay. Thank you also to Lauren and your staff for continuing to keep us informed and keep the public informed, and you do it in an amazing way. Thank you for that. And also to our HR staff, and you've been busy all year trying to fill positions, and now I know it's going to be turned up a little more. So thank you for all that you do, and anything we can do to support you, please let us know. Also, if board members can continue to push about preschool registration, it's moving slow in all cities, but especially this year, I think, coming out of the pandemic. So we can continue to let parents know that the Harry and do that because they all come at one time. When school starts, that can be, you know, pretty dramatic. So if we can do that, and also for kindergarten students that are trying to start, if we can get registration going for that, that'd be great. If there are no other comments or concerns, thank you all for coming, and have a great night.
Good night.